Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Candidates Forum, presented by the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County. My name is Carrie Moon Dupree, and I am the Vice President of Voter Service for the Northwest County League. While there is a city clerk election, the current clerk is running unopposed, and therefore, there was no need for a clerk forum. So tonight, we welcome the candidates running for the Westland City Council. We thank the Village of Westland, part of Presbyterian Villages of Michigan, for allowing us to use their facility for this public education event. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. We do not support or oppose any candidate running for office. The League does take positions on issues after careful study. So you may see our name attached to an issue that we're advocating for or opposing. Membership in the League is open to all citizens who are at least 16 years old. So if you're interested in joining this public service organization, please let us know. Membership applications are available here tonight and at our website, L W V NorthwestWayne.org. The League's main mission is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation in government. One of the ways we do that is by having forums, such as this one here tonight. The League has also prepared a nonpartisan voter guide, which can be found online after September 24th, at www.votes411.org. By typing in your address, you can view the races on your ballot and the candidates' responses to questions posed by the League. You can also find the League link to the voter guide at our website, L W V NorthwestWayne.org. These addresses are provided on the free bookmarks as you entered into the meeting room, so you don't have to remember everything I just said. Printer voter guides will also be available at the Westland Local Library early in October. If you would like to ask a question of the candidates, and we certainly encourage this, please write your question on a card and hand it to one of the ushers in the aisles. You signal that by raising your hand with the card, or just raising your hand if you need a card. Our moderator will ask as many questions as time allows. Questions should be brief, to the point, and not include any personal attacks on the candidates. We reserve the right to screen the questions for duplication and clarity. Each candidate will be asked the same question. So if a question is directed to a particular candidate, if it cannot be answered by all the candidates, it won't be asked. Thanks to the passage of Proposal 3 in last November's election, voting in Michigan has become more convenient. Citizens who are not yet registered to vote can do so through Election Day. However, citizens must register in person at the Westland City Clerk's office if they are registering less than 15 days before the election. Also, anyone can now request an absentee ballot for any reason, and using that absentee ballot can vote by mail or in person at the clerk's office before 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. A mail-in absentee ballot must also be received by the clerk before 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. Please silence your cell phones at this time. The views expressed tonight at this forum are those of the candidates, and not of the League of Women Voters. I'd like to introduce you now to our moderator, League Member Roberta Young, who will provide you with more details about tonight's forum.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Roberta Young. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County, and I live in Malonea. We try to have somebody who's not in the community come and do the candidates' meetings. It makes life a little bit simpler. All seven candidates for the four seats on the Westland City Council have been invited to participate in tonight's forum. Mr. Godbutt was unable to attend this evening, and he sends his regrets. The general election is Tuesday, November 5th, 2019. City Council candidates chose a number from a sack when they came into the room, and that is the seating order that they have before you. Each candidate will get the same, will be asked the same question, and will ask and answer as many questions as time allows. As Carrie said, our questions tonight are coming from the audience, but we've also received a number of questions emailed to us in advance. Excuse me, I'll get closer. Is that better?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay. Each candidate in the council forum will have one-minute opening statement, one-minute response to all the questions, and a one-minute closing statement at the end. We will rotate the order of the candidate who responds first. We have some other volunteers here to help us. Maureen Hughes and Jackie Peters are in the front row, and they'll be holding up signs for the candidates, so that when they say "stop," please stop. When the time is up. We'll begin our opening statement with Mr. McDermott. Please introduce yourself and give your opening statement.
My name is Mike McDermott, and I am running to be one of your City Councilmen in Westland City Council, but only if I are on your ballot. I want to talk about three dates really quickly. 1977, 2010, and 2013. In 1977, my mother bought her first house right here, in the city of Westland, up on Cracker Street, right behind Angel Brothers. In 2010, I was a student at Wayne State University while I watched the economy go down the tubes, and working people, working people, get, well, millionaires and billionaires get bailed out. In 2013, I watched my home father lose his house. And what that taught me, going to Wayne State and seeing my dad lose his house, is that government, outer accounting, and our society are interconnected, but they're interconnected in the wrong way, because it's not working for people. When government stops working for people, that affects all of us. We've got a great city here, and I hope to earn one.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Cheers sticking here. My name is Deborah Kier, and I'm running for Westland City Council. I've lived here for 35 years. I own a home, and I pay my taxes. I worked for the United States Postal Service, and I began as a letter carrier, and I was a union steward for the National Association of Letter Carriers. I moved up to be a supervisor, and I retired last year with 30 years. I decided a long time ago to dedicate, to dedicate my life to serving my community. And I did that ever since I moved to Westland. Through the Westland J C's. I served as President, District Director, and Community Program Manager for the Michigan J C's. Tonight, I'm here to answer any of your questions and for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDermott?
Hello, my name is Michael Delft, and I'm running for council for the city of Westland. I'm a 20-year resident here. I have 25 years' experience with municipals, working with the government. There's a lot we can do here in Westland to make it a better, safer, prosperous place, and with your vote, I can do this in public talk. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Amber McAlkowsky, and I, too, am running for Westland City Council. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Village of Westland for hosting us this evening. I am the proud graduate of the University of Michigan, and have 12 years' experience owning my own business, as well as countless hours volunteering in my community as part of the J C's, where I received an award from the state for my leadership qualities. I am happily married to my husband Eric, who's a professional firefighter, and together, we have a five-year-old son. So like any other parent, we want a safe community and opportunities for our child. But being married to a firefighter gives me a unique insight to the daily lives of our first responders. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Gilbert?
Hello, my name is Timothy Gilbert, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank the League of Women Voters here today, and all of you that have come out here this afternoon. My family and I have been residents here in the city of Westland for over 20 years. My son and daughter are both graduates of our John Glenn High School. Both have continued on and are pursuing their dreams as law enforcement officers. My background consists as a law enforcement officer in the Detroit Police Department Special Operations Unit, a veteran in the United States Marine Corps, and a proud, extremely successful business owner as a private investigator licensed in four different states. I am rooted here in Westland. Westland is my home, and I wanted to succeed, and thank you for coming out this evening.
Well, good evening, everyone. You won't have a hard time hearing me, I've got a loud mouth. I want to thank the League of Women Voters and also the Village of Westland for hosting this candidate forum tonight. It seems like just yesterday, we were here for the ribbon cutting for all the improvements. I'd also like to thank everyone for attending. It shows the level of concern that you all have for our wonderful community. As I said, my name is Michael Londo, and I'm a lifelong resident and homeowner, and I'm one of two incumbent city council members seeking reelection. Two years ago, I was honored and humbled to have been elected to serve you. I promised one thing, and that was to work hard for you, and I think I've kept that promise. You've seen my work ethic, whether it's through preparation for meetings and then actively in my community. My record on city council is, includes examples of prioritizing public safety. We have over $14 million of community infrastructure improvements, fiscal responsibility with a balanced budget, and strategic planning to increase business investment in our city. I'm looking forward to a positive and productive discussion tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. The first question will go to Mr. McDermott. What is your position on district voting?
We've seen in some of our neighboring communities, in the city of Inkster and the city of Wayne, where the ward-style voting system really hasn't benefited those communities. I had the chance to knock thousands and thousands of doors as a candidate last time, and also as a member of the Michigan Democratic Party running our local campaign office in the city of Wayne, and I listened to residents in the city of Wayne. And I knocked doors in Inkster, and I listened to residents there, and they told me about the shortcomings and the pitfalls of ward voting. I believe that you should be allowed to choose the candidates you want, regardless of where they live in the city. Were we a city the size of New York City, or Los Angeles, or Chicago, it may make sense. We're a city of 84,000 people, and to section off the city into wards, I don't think makes good sense. And furthermore, when you look at the fact that we only had seven candidates running this time, as it is, we may not have enough candidates to cover each ward in the city. So if ward voting does get on the ballot and the voters do decide to vote for it, well, that's the will of the people. But I will be opposing ward voting with the reason I stated.
I'm also opposed to ward voting, and I've done a little bit of research. I went to the National League of Cities, and there's really no benefit for the city of our size to be split up into wards or districts. Both the benefits for that kind of voting are only for big municipalities like New York, or Chicago, or Detroit. Also, in the, what do I want to call it? Geographical barriers, like bridges, or rivers, or huge lakes. Would that only be a benefit for ward voting? Also, I think if there was ward voting, there would also be a lot of deals being made.
I have to stop.
Ward voting, it's a hot topic. I think it needs to be looked into more. I don't believe our city is large enough for this to work. But I do believe, looking into it more, to find out the answer on it. Wayne is a very small city. I understand why that did not work. We're not as big as Detroit, or any of those other cities. So as of right now, my feelings on ward is no for right now. Further investigation, I'm open to.
Ward voting. So the problem that I find with ward voting is that a community and that district are going to look for someone to run and represent them. And that doesn't guarantee that they're getting the best representation for their, their needs. So the current system that we have in Westland, you have seven council members, all of whom should be available to address your, your interests, all of whom should be representing you. I don't believe that the ward system is the right fit, because we have to make sure that if we were to utilize that type of voting system, that we're finding the best candidates to represent your interests.
My thoughts on ward voting will be how we oppose to ward voting. However, if these residents of the city of Westland choose to put it on the ballot, and it is elected, of course, if that vote moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I appreciate the question, but I represent everybody, regardless of where they live, regardless of where I live, always have, and always will.
Thank you. We'll start the second question with Ms. Kiera. I'm going to have to keep turning the microphone on and off, so that you don't have the feedback. So I may not get to call you for each question, but please do what you're doing. Just keep going from one sentence to the other. There's a little, there's a child here, push up, so it's... Push, is, is it on now? Okay, I'll turn mine off then, if yours is on. Let me give you the question, right. Let me give you the question first. What issues led you, led you to run for city council?
Well, I've always been active in the community, like I said, with the Westland J C's. And I think our city's doing very well. Do we need help in the police and fire staffing? Yes, we do. But we need to find the funds to do it. Do we need help with repairing our roads? Yes, we do. We need to contact our state, federal, and county representatives to get our revenue sharing back. These are kinds of things that I want to be active in and making these decisions for everyone. And I just feel that... The lady with the card. I just feel that I can help in doing that, and I want to help in doing that.
Well, what got me wanting to do this is our police and fire first. We should be having more police and fire hunts now. They should be getting raises, and they shouldn't have to be worrying about the retirement either. Our roads, yes, they're in dire need. And with my experience working with the government, of 25 years of doing this, there's so many more things they can be doing, with the federal grants, state grants, working with SimCOG. These are all our Act 51, with the gas and tax and everything. There's so much more, and that's why I'm doing this. I, I can help the city do this. I've done it where I work at, and I look forward to doing this. Thank you.
So my desire to run for city council stems from having served as a J C in my community for a long time. And a lot of the things that you do when you provide community service at that level kind of feels like Band-Aids instead of solutions. So I want to bring real solutions to my city. And as the wife of a professional firefighter, I have a unique insight to what the daily lives of our first responders are and what their needs are. And we have to make sure that they're represented on council, not always having to fight for what is deservedly theirs. And as a mother, any parent wants a safe neighborhood for their child to grow up in, with plenty of opportunity. And I believe that my education and skill set will allow me to bring that to the rest of the citizens.
Currently in the past, I have been part of the John Glenn Club High School Booster Club, Tax and Increment Finance Authority, Civil Service Commission Board, Board Member of the Westland Chamber of Commerce, Member of the Westland Rotary Club, Member of the Veteran Foreign Wars. Each of these opportunities in which I served has given me a unique perspective on how the city operates, and how we can improve upon our quality of life, our business community, and our public safety. And as the only past law enforcement officer, I can assure you I will work with our law enforcement in the city of Westland to make sure we get bigger numbers. Thank you.
Thank you again for the question. Serving my community's working families at the local level is a tremendous opportunity, and I don't take that for granted. My roots are in Westland. I'm a lifelong resident where I grew up, where I went to school, where I graduated, where I've had a long vision and service in the community actively, and various chair of organizations. Starting back in 2011, all the way to 2013. I served on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council for the city of Westland, and soon after, in 2015, I served on the Downtown Development Authority. Serving on the DDA gave me insight into the municipal finance laws and how that operates. Municipal finance and budgeting is a lot different than your house budgeting. So I was able to get firsthand experience serving on the DDA, where I was actually elected to be the youngest chairman of the DDA. And I was elected two years ago to serve on the city council, so I think I have the experience. So hopefully, be reelected and serve you all for four more years.
Thank you very much, Mr. Londo. We'll start question number three with Mr. Delft.
That is perfectly okay, but... But for me, government is a tool for goodness. It is a tool to lift people up, to improve the lives of working families, to improve the lives of people all across our city. And when we lose sight of that mandate for why we are put there, to be public servants, that to me becomes a problem. That's one of the reasons I'm running. I want to work with my fellow councilpeople to bring transparency and accountability to Westland. That's why I have a 10-point plan that you can read online at VictorLundForMichigan.com that calls for a reinstatement of our currently vacant Board of Ethics that has sat vacant for over 10 years. That's why I want to see a comprehensive ethics ordinance, like some of our neighboring communities have now. And I'm also running to improve our public safety. I'm proud to have the support of our Westland firefighters, Local 1279, because a good community is only as good as a safe community. And when we have, when we want to build a safe community forever, we have to support our police, our fire, our first responders with the resources necessary, not just to keep Westland safe, but to keep good property values to all of our homes. I live right there at Avondale and Wildwood.
Thank you. The next question will be for Mr. Delft. What prepares you to be a city council member?
My 25 years working with the city of farms and the hills. I've worked on the budget with them, I've worked on grants with them, I've worked on getting new equipment, you name it. I worked with the Parks Department, we have some of the best parks there. My experience doing this, working with other council mayors and city managers, gives me the, the experience and the knowledge of doing this. I do this every day. I'm still doing it, and I can continue it here. Thank you.
So I find that I feel that I'm qualified to serve on your city council because I have a long tradition of community service. I have helped a number of our citizens through very difficult times. And if I'm given the opportunity to find solutions to their problems instead of Band-Aids, I'd be very happy to do that. I am a graduate of the University of Michigan. Professionally, I work as a mortgage loan officer, so I am very cognizant of what the working person's budget at home looks like. And I know how concerned they are every day about their taxes and their school systems. And so, you know, I seem like a broken record, but as a woman and a mother, you know, you just want good communities, and there's no one who will work harder for your community than a mother.
So what prepares me to run for city council in the city of Westland was my longstanding, extremely successful business owner, financially smart in what I do with my business, and I've been in business for over 15 years. I go back to the United States Marine Corps, integrity and discipline. That's all we were taught from 1993 to 1997, I was in the United States Marine Corps. I go back to serving as a police officer in the city of Detroit, integrity, discipline, the right state of mind, dealing with our public servants firsthand. I go back to be a small business owner, 2008 to present, serving on your Civic Courtesy of Citizens Commission, Board of Westland Chamber of Commerce, and numerous others. I am prepared to serve you as a city council member. Thank you.
Thank you. So what prepares me to be a city coun, prepares me to be a city council member? I'm already a city council member. You all elected me two years ago, and I appreciate that. And prior to that, again, I served on the DDA for two years. We went through two budgets. We had some great projects on the DDA, built that beautiful Lions Pavilion out there next to the farmer's market. I was the chairman of the DDA when we did that. Been through two balanced budgets on city council, and one of my biggest strengths is accessibility. I have been accessible to all of you, the residents of Westland, every day. My phone, my phone number's published everywhere possible in the city of Westland. I instituted coffee hours along with some of my colleagues on the city council, which is something that probably has never been done in the city of Westland for city council. We've had seven of these coffee hours. We move them all around the community to hear your concerns and address your concerns. I don't just vote on your budget, I help you. If you call me with a road issue, I'm helping you. If you call me with a trash issue, I'm helping you. If you call me with a crime issue, I'm helping you. I'm here to serve you, and I hope to serve you for four more years.
So in 2010, I was proud to graduate from Wayne State University, where I studied Michigan sci, Michigan politics, political science, and communications. And after surviving through a really tough economy, which many graduates did, I'm unable to find a job. I went back to school, and I got my master's degree. It's where I went to Walsh College and got a master's in human resource management. And I worked as a job creator, as a recruiter. I worked for a company called Sun Communities, where every day, I matched people up with not only a job, but a career, so they can, you know, get started on their own. So, you know, I understand the intangibles of how government works, of how budgeting works, of how public policy is made. But even more than that, I've gone around here in the city of Westland and knocked over 15,000 doors. And I understand how everyday policies that we do as councilpeople affect people's lives. Because if you don't get out there, if you're not in the community, and you don't talk to people, you don't know what you don't know. You have to see how your actions as an elected official, as a public servant, are rooted in people's lives and how they can help people.
Like I said before, I'm going to sound like a broken record. The Westland J C's was my life for 35 years. The organization is based on training young people to be leaders in their community and going out and running for city council, or state rep, or mayor. Which, by the way, I'm not interested in any of their offices. I just want to be a city councilperson. But also, that training that I got with the Westland J C's, I carried it through to my postal career and when I was a supervisor. I was a customer service supervisor in finance. I loved doing the numbers. I know the government red tape. And I just feel that I would be an asset to the council.
The next question, we'll start with Ms. McAlkowsky. What are the biggest challenges facing the Westland City Council?
So currently, ooh, feedback. I would have to say that the biggest challenge with the Westland City Council today is the inability to get our business done during our business meetings. Far too often, it seems that the business of the city is being put aside, and that personal agendas are being addressed. And, you know, when you're charged with representing your constituents, they don't want their time wasted. They want the business done, and they want their, you know, their interests to be your priority, not only for the twice, the two times a month that you...
not only for the twice, the two times a month that you meet, but in every aspect that you are working for them.
Well, the biggest issue I see facing the city council here today is communication and transparency on all aspects, from all members. Every day when we get together as city council members, there's going to be issues that we don't agree on. And that's supposed to be how it works in government. We don't agree on certain issues, because then we get to the bottom level. We get resolved from that. And that's okay, but we still have to have a communication on a certain level. We have to have dignity and respect for everyone. So I think with the dignity and respect and transparency that I bring to the city council, I think we're going in the right direction. Thank you.
So what are the biggest challenges facing our city? Public safety staffing, I feel that number one is our issue. We don't have as many officers as we once had. We don't have as many firefighters as we once had. We're depending on a safer grant to provide federal funding for firefighters because we're short-staffed. Those men and women work hard every day to keep our city safe, but they need more help. And that's my number one goal every time is for public safety. We're also an aging community. And what I mean by that are infrastructure underneath the ground, old water pipes, old roads, crumbling roads. We need to continue to work on our infrastructure. And we also have to have parks and recreation amenities so that our young people and our seniors alike can enjoy themselves in a walkable, mobile community and enjoy a good quality of life here in the city. Thanks.
So it's really unfortunate that forty-three million of our taxpayer dollars over the last twelve years have been withheld from the state of Michigan. That is municipal revenue sharing that, as Councilman Lando talks about, as Andrea talks about, money that should be going to our police, money that should be going to our firefighters, money that should be going to keep us safe here in the city of Westland. And when you lose forty-three million dollars from the state, that's why we're dependent on the cops grant. That's why we're dependent on the safer grant. So I want to work with our partners in the legislature to make sure that revenue sharing in local communities are a priority. I also want to bring transparency and accountability back to city government. That's why I want to reinstate our Board of Ethics and have an ethics ordinance that's comprehensive like some of our neighboring communities. And the other big thing is, we all take out the trash, whether it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Unfortunately, we take out the recyclables with it now. We need to find a real solution, work regionally to fix our trash and recycling problem so that we are not sending our recyclables to landfill and certainly not going to send them to the incinerator either.
Biggest challenge, I think, is finding the money for our police and fire staffing. I'm willing to listen to any ideas that anyone has. Personally, I think we should pressure our federal, state, and county representatives to get our money back, because that's what we need. Civility and respect at our council meetings. A lot of people, I think, don't understand that the council meetings is for city business, for the council to take care of business at those meetings. And also, I think we should work, that the council should work more together and be respectful of each other.
The biggest challenge on the council is definitely the safety. We shouldn't just be balancing a budget and not helping our fire and police. We need them, and they need to be safe. Working these long hours is unsafe for them. The other issue is working together, council. I've been to these councils, I've been going to them, and it seems that it's separated. Some of them are working together as a group. They're not all together. And that is not how council should work. Everybody should be working together. We should be working in a solid crowd. The other issue with the recycle, EPA put out four hundred billions in grants. We should be going for these grants. We should be working with Garden City together, a few other communities. Coming together, work together, and work out a good deal for our recycle.
Next question, we'll start with you. Do you support having council... No, we did that one. I'm sorry. It's a duplicit question. What is your input on the Parks and Recreation Department, especially the golf course?
Our parks are wrecked, as we just got a new director over the past year. Has been improved, from what I've seen, phenomenally. Including our soccer fields with the grass. I mean, I walked over to these soccer fields last year, two years ago, and they were unplayable on. Now, the grass and the fields and the soccer field is beautiful. Our parks are in the right direction. The golf course, obviously, was just renamed. I look forward to going out there and golfing next year, as I have this year. Unfortunately, we are facing a deficit with the golf course. There's no way to get around that. As a city council member, I hope to come with a positive output for the golf course and put it in the right direction. Thank you.
So the question was, what is my input on the Parks and Recreation Department, specifically the golf course? Recently, we just renamed the golf course, the Mack Mayfield Municipal Golf Course. Mack Mayfield is a former employee, long-term resident of the city. Just named the golf course after. We put significant investments into the golf course. We put significant investments into our Mike McDonald Ice Arena. Wait till you see the lobby improvements, you guys are going to love that. We've also had significant improvements to Stoudemire Park, J C Park, Vols Park. We've done more for Parks and Recreation these last two years than I think we have in the last five years, six years. So I will continue to be a steward for Parks and Recreation Services. And like Mr. Gilbert said, we do have a new parks director. Our previous parks director, I thought, did a fabulous job, Mr. Brian Harnells. And Tom Morgan's doing a great job as well. So, thank you.
So a budget is a reflection of your values. A budget shows what you value and how much importance you place on that. And I'm glad to see that we've made significant investments in our Parks and Recreation over the last two years. It was unfortunate that the Westland outdoor food was torn down, and the Bailey Center was gone. We lost some of our Parks and Recreation Services. It was unfortunate when the soccer fields were unplayable and for temporarily, our local youth soccer league had to go to the city at the moment. But we've done a significantly better job improving those services. And I want to make sure that our budgets here in the future of the city of Westland, whether it is for the Mack Mayfield Golf Course, whether it is for the Tiger Center, or whether it is for Jefferson Barnes, or any number of parks that we have here in the city of Westland, that our budgets reflect the values that show that we value Parks and Recreational Services. Not only for families and children to use, not only for our recreational use, but also for our property values. If you want good property values, if you want to attract families to come into your community and live, you need good Parks and Recreational Services.
I'm going to deal a little bit about what Mike said. I know over the last two, three years, we have done great improvements to our parks. They never looked better. When I was out walking, one gentleman asked if we could get a little bench out by Corral Park because he wanted to sit and watch butterflies. But I think our parks look great. I want to continue the way that they look. It's wonderful for our children and our families to go to, to have family reunions, or whatever they want to do out there. And I just think that we've done a good job so far.
Our parks have definitely improved from what they were. The Bailey Center, that was sad. I would love to add to cut that here. My kids went there, and they used to go there. The golf course, it's a nice-looking golf course. I believe we need to keep up with it. I know the building needs some work on it. I believe the roof was leaking there, and we need to keep up with that. We have some schools that are closing, and that's sad, but I think we should work with them. We can make more parks where the schools are. Also, when I'm going around talking to residents, I'm getting a lot of feedback for dog park. A lot of people want to be able to take their dogs somewhere, let them run. They don't have the backyard or enough room for them to run. I think using some of these schools, make a dog park, I think would be a great idea.
And I'm going to echo what the rest of my fellow candidates here are saying, that our parks have improved vastly, and that's true. You know, I would like to see there be some more equipment for our children to actually go and play on at some of our parks. But the question was about the golf course. And, you know, it annually runs at a deficit. But I think part of that deficit is due to the fact that we have a projected revenue budget for the golf course and the ice arena and even our other facilities that we rent out. So because you have a projected revenue number, you really have to bring that in line with what the expenditure for that building is. But it's an excellent golf course, and it's a place that our seniors enjoy golfing during the week. And on the weekends, you get to enjoy it as well. But nobody should be subjected to my golf game.
Mr. Lando. Do you believe we have an opioid abuse problem in Westland? If so, what will you do to curb it or offer rehabilitation to those affected?
We absolutely do have an opioid problem in our facility. I spoke out against it at one of the recent council meetings when we had this facility come up for a vote. I said enough's enough. Fifty people died in my community in 2018 alone, and that's not good for me. I see people shaking their head, it's not good for you either. If you look at the surrounding communities, Angster, Garden City, Wayne, and Westland, a hundred and two people died of opioid abuse. I would say we have a problem. But before we had this opioid facility come to us for approval, we were working with the Families Against Narcotics. Our police chief sits on that board. We also are working with Growth Works. So if someone wants to come for, they need help, they have beds reserved for them at St. Mary's Hospital, and they're working with us, with the police department and the community, to give these people help. So yes, we do have an absolute problem, and that's one of my big issues that I want to continue to tackle.
So here in Wayne County, not just Western Wayne County, in Wayne County, we are number two in terms of opioid overdoses, only behind the city of Detroit. And as Councilman Lando said, when you have sixty people in our community that have tragically died, you know we have an epidemic. And for far too long in this country, we have treated this like a criminal justice problem when it should be treated like a health problem. Here in the state of Michigan, we spend forty-four thousand dollars per year to incarcerate someone. When you incarcerate someone who is addicted to opioids or addicted to any kind of drugs, you are not helping them. Because when they get out, they have not gotten the medical, the emotional, the spiritual, the psychological treatment that they need. So while I think we could have looked at potentially a different location, I was absolutely in favor of the idea of having an opioid facility here in the Westland. I lost a cousin to here. My cousin Alex tried, he died in 2015 because he overdosed him here. He was clean for two years, and it only takes one time to lose somebody. So we absolutely need to be at the forefront of fighting the opioid epidemic. And also, I think we need to work with our police department to enact a good Samaritan ordinance so people do not feel afraid to go to police when they have a friend, or neighbor, or family member who's overdosed.
Yes, we definitely have an opioid problem. Isn't that what community is about, is helping people in need in your community? And we need to help these people. So I just feel that the facility was a good idea. I wasn't so much in favor of the location, but we need to help.
Yes, we do have a problem. I lost a relative from this. I'm not in favor of the site that was at, the opioid site that they picked. It could have been a better place. And the other thing council should have done, there's only ten percent of those beds going to be left for the residents. The rest of them are going to be for, on the national register. They could be coming from wherever. As council, I would not allow that to happen. It's in our city. It should be for our residents should first have first crack at it. But there is definitely a problem here, and they do need help, and we should be helping.
I think we found something that we all have a true consensus on. Yes, there's an opioid epidemic in our city, in our county, in our country. You know, I think part of the problem is when you talk about addiction, a lot of us have this fiction, this story of who we've decided the addict is. And, you know, what we've forgotten is this is mom, and dad, and grandma, and grandpa, or even your youngster that had a sports injury. So when we talk about opioids, we're not really talking about the junkie on the corner. And so in terms of the facility, not my favorite place to put it as a location. But in 2013, we decided we were going to be compassionate city. And being a compassionate city means providing the means for somebody to heal, allow families the opportunity to watch their loved ones heal in a safe environment. And we have to make sure that we are putting an appropriate amount of pressure on doctors, who are too free with their prescribing of these drugs, and Big Pharma.
As everyone here at the tables have said, yes, we have a national issue with opioids. There's no question about it. As a prior law enforcement officer, dealing with narcotics in the city of Detroit, I had the experience in dealing with these individuals, and I would have been a no vote. Do you know why I would have been a no vote? I wouldn't want it in my backyard. However, we need it in the city of Westland. We do need that facility, but it would have been in a different place. We have to think about the voting when we vote for things like this. Is it in your backyard, my backyard? The answer is no for me. It's not, it wouldn't have happened. However, we need that facility, but it would have been an industrial area. We can keep track and keep the crime down. There is no question, as a prior law enforcement officer, we're going to have some issues there. Thank you.
The next question, we'll start with Mr. McDermott. What is your position on the city of Westland selling marijuana in retail shops?
So that's a great question. In 2018, when I worked here at Fort Worth in Millville for the Michigan Democratic Party, we were for the Proposal One Dollar Initiative, and I supported the legalization of marijuana. And I do believe that there is revenue that we can put towards fixing our roads, that there's revenue that we can put into our Parks and Recreation by allowing the legalization of marijuana and the sale of it here in the city of Westland. My concern is, listen, who is going to get the licenses? Is it going to be the same big business people that already have multiple city contracts? Is it going to be Big Tobacco that's going to swoop in with their small business-oriented people who really act as a front group for Big Tobacco and for big business? Or are we going to let mom and pop and small business grow bright? So if the licenses are going to the same people that have big city contracts, or if it's just a shell game for Big Tobacco, I would be a no vote. However, I do believe that there is revenue to gain, and I do believe that we can fill some of our vacancies all throughout the city of Westland with this.
This is a big decision for our city, but I'm for it. I think, like Mike said, we have to watch who pulls these licenses and just keep track and make sure that our city still stays safe with these facilities and with the retail part also. But yes, I'm for it.
I got to agree with Mr. McDermott. As far as the small business, I don't think it should just be all the large businesses coming in and taking over. There should be some kind of system set up where it's fair, where everybody has a fair shot at getting a license. I agree with legalizing it and selling it in the retail. I don't believe somebody that needs this as a medical should have to go down to the industrial area to pick up their medical marijuana. They should be able to walk in just like a pharmacy store and get their medical marijuana and go back to their house. I don't believe there should be abundance of them. They should be, you know, anywhere from two hundred and fifty feet apart. They shouldn't be on top of each other. It's not how many we can have, it's about the quality and keeping our city looking good.
I'm in support of the marijuana legislation that our overwhelming majority of people in our state chose to support. You know, I have similar challenges with it. You know, first of all, the industrial area is not what I'm called. Doesn't pass the grammar test. And it's kind of a scary idea to go into an industrial area where there's not a lot of lighting, and there's lots of nooks and crannies, or somebody who has nefarious deeds on their mind could hurt a loved one. You know, additionally, there are many citizens in our city... You know, additionally, there are many citizens in our city who are already using marijuana medicinally and they are taking their business outside the city. And so that's an opportunity for us to recapture a little bit of revenue. You know, but there's been talk about abatements for these shops, which I'm absolutely against. We have plenty of players who want to come in and invest in our city. And I'm really curious to see if that excise tax is actually going to trickle down to our community.
Great question. And again, I'll go back to as a law enforcement officer in the city of Detroit and a special operations officer, I've worked in narcotic units. I agree with the marijuana coming into the commercialized zones. I spoke about this six years ago in front of the city council up in Portage, Michigan, trying to move it out of the residential into commercial. Because what we have is we have a safety issue in our residential areas when we have marijuana growers and sellers when we have these homes. We have nonstop traffic coming in out of these houses. Who wants to have somebody sell narcotics or marijuana next door to their own home? I agree, we need to have them. But we need to have them in a commercialized area where they can be attended to accordingly. Thank you. So the question again was, what is your position on selling marijuana in retail shops? I believe our entire city council right now, seven of us are in favor of it for many of the reasons that other candidates spoke about today. Our residents have a need for it. They have to go to other communities to purchase it. We have a revenue problem. One of my biggest concerns is to make sure we have a fair and transparent process. All of our meetings, when I say all of them, we've had about eight, I think eight study sessions so far have been open to the public. We've had a packed room for every single study session. All of the material is online at cityofwestline.com. Anybody in the room can look at anything that I'm looking at or any of my colleagues are looking at. I'm very cautious, I'm really worried about lawsuits. That's been my number one thing is your tax money, don't want to go through lawsuits. So fair and transparent process and accountability.
The next question, we'll start with Ms. Kira. What is your voting record in the past 10 years, including school, primary, general and special elections? That's how have you voted? Have you, not how you voted, who you voted every election?
I have voted forever, since I was 18 years old. I voted every election, every school board election. Always have, always will. I was also a precinct volunteer in '34. So yes, I vote every election since I was 18.
I have voted every election since I was 18. My parents, they preached that on us when we were young. I used to go with them to the polls, the old voting machine, you'd go to the curtains and pull the levers and yes, and then I also worked the voting. We delivered the machines, we'd set them up and did all that. I'm very proud and honored every time I do go vote. I don't take it lightly, I take it very, very serious. I appreciate that vote, November 5th, 2018.
I too participate in all of my elections. I have voted as Mr. Delft and Mrs. Kerr since I was 18 years old. I had the privilege of being very active in my particular party's club at my university. So I've worked pretty diligently on helping candidates. You know, I had a really great conversation with a citizen when I knocked on her door and we were talking about voting and, you know, we threw around the words right and privilege and I like her word, she says it's an obligation.
You know, as a United States Marine Corps veteran, I feel it's a right as a citizen of this country to vote. And I have voted on every election that possible that I could make to those calls. Sometimes I was overseas, I was unable to get an absentee ballot, I did not vote. But most of the time I did vote and we, I had this conversation with my wife a few years ago. She didn't really vote. My kid's 20, my daughter's 23. And I said, you know, it's time for you guys to sit down and understand responsibilities of a United States citizen. Let's sit down and talk about voting. They didn't know who to vote for. Also, I wanted them to understand whoever you vote for, make sure it's your choice. Because that's important, it's a responsibility of a citizen in this state. So I might do, every time I get to vote, I would vote. As a veteran, I think it's our responsibility. Thank you. So what is my voting record in the past 10 years? I don't know that answer to be honest, but I have voted in darn near every election since I was 18. My mother instilled in me the right to vote, the privilege to vote. I walk right up to Elliott Elementary School right by my house. I know my election workers by name, they know me every time I walk in. I walk in whether there's one person in line or there's 300 people in line. I believe it's, as Andrew said, I was at that same door, it's a privilege for us to vote. There's many countries where people can vote. So like I said, I don't know my exact record, I don't want to say, I don't want to put it on the record that I voted in every single election, I don't know that I did, but I vote every single time I can.
When I was 10 years old, while all the other kids were reading Calvin and Hobbes and Garfield, I was watching C-SPAN. When I was 17 years old in 2004, I cried on election night, not because the candidate I wanted to win did or didn't win, but because I didn't get the opportunity to vote and I missed voting in the presidential election by one year. I always vote, every election possible I vote. And not only that, I am active and engaged in getting other people to vote. In 2018, I had the privilege to work for the Michigan Democratic Party over in our campaign office at Ford Road and Middle Belt and I knocked thousands and thousands of doors to get residents all across the city of Westline to get out and exercise their right to vote. Now maybe some of them didn't vote for the candidate of my choosing and that's okay because as President Obama said, there's an old saying, "Don't boo, vote." No matter who you like, no matter who you support, get out there and exercise your fundamental American right to vote. And I was proud to encourage thousands of my fellow citizens right here in the city of Westline to vote. And I did it too when I was a student at Wayne State University running around campus with a clipboard.
Okay, we'll start the next one with Mr. Delft. Do you believe all the signs in Westland are the best use of DDA funds? Why or why not?
I do not believe that it is the right thing. We can use the fund for other things, more important things. And honestly, there are, there's so much more that, you know, we could be using this fund for. And the police and the fire, we definitely, that is our main goal here in the city, to get the fire and police back to what they were. We don't need calls being late and everything. And they need to be safe and we need to be safe.
Oh, those signs, I've heard so much about those signs. So, you know, here's the challenge, we have money that's earmarked and allocated. So we have two districts in our city that have tax dollars put into special funds, so that's your DDA and your Tifa. And so, you know, the signs, not everybody's favorite project, however, the funds used to put those signs around, the wayfinding signs around the city were specific funds. There are DDA or Tifa funds that are earmarked for placemaking and beautification projects. I'm not knowledgeable about what other projects your DDA funds and Tifa funds can go to, but I do know that they do not enter your general fund and they are not preventing us from funding the other necessities that we need.
I'll echo Andrea on that, oh, the signs. You know, I sat on the taxi with Finance Authority Board when these signs were first introduced way back when, I believe. Don't quote me on that, it may be before that time. But they are, like Andrea said, these funds are earmarked for certain things, like the DDA. The DDAs have certain things that they have to utilize those funds for. It's no different than on Warren Avenue when we put up those new lithium lights or the lights up there that we put up there. They're, I mean, they're a great lighting system, but there are certain things we have got to use that money for. Tifa and the DDA have got to utilize those funds in certain areas. And that's what the board has chosen to do and I respect the decision. Thank you. So as a former chairman of the Downtown Development Authority, they're absolutely right. Certain funds for DDA or Tifa, which is your tax increment finance authority, have to be spent within those boundaries. Local business owners serve on your DDA. People that live, that work along Ford Road, along Warren Road, their tax dollars pay for those signs. While I think there's a little bit too many of them, I think the concept was a good idea. We're trying to market our community, we're trying to brand our community. We've got some incredible assets in our community like our Westline Public Library, like City Hall, like the Farmers and Artisan Marketplace and our beautiful play structure and many other amenities in the community. We all know where things are at. We're a city of 85,000 residents, we're a city of 200 square miles. Residents from other cities don't know where the city hall is, they don't know where Tanton Park is. So I think it was a little bit overkill on how many signs there were, but again, I respect the decision of the DDA. Try to skip to down there.
That's all right, that's all right.
So in a perfect world, I would be for having these signs. I understand that they come out of our DDA and Tifa budget, but I think there are other projects that we could have put these towards. Specifically, some of the streetlights that we've seen up there by Westline Mall that have gone in, some of the new LED lighting that has gone in and also some of these swing arms for our traffic lights, I think would have added to the beautification of our city. We live in a digital age of GPS and you're going to see more and more people in the future have a smartphone. I understand that not everybody does now, but when you have people using smartphones and you have, you know, GPS where you can talk to your phone and say, you know, "Okay, Google, hey Siri, find the nearest park near me," you have those resources right up in the palm of your hand. So I would have liked to have seen that the DDA money port towards more swing arms and more street lighting to beautify the city overall.
Well, I like the signs and let me tell you why. I was engaged in a conversation with someone who doesn't live here and they were having trouble finding the Dyer Center. And she said, "Thank God for those signs or I never would have found it." So the signs are for people who live here and for people who come and visit us, to get them around town. Because Westline is kind of split up all over the place. And I like them and the DDA are, they pay tax dollars, I believe it's on Ford Road and Warren Road. They didn't come out of the tax dollars that you pay, it's the businesses that pay those tax dollars. So that's how those signs were bought. And like I said, I like them and people can get around town better, our visitors can get around town better.
Mr. Council. What is your top priority for the city of Westland?
Well, I'm sure it comes as no surprise that my top priority for the city of Westland is to make sure that our citizens are safe and that we have the police and firefighters' manpower to make sure that our response times come down to a reasonable level. Working really hard at being accredited and currently our response times are not falling within our accreditation standards. So for me, that means that there needs to be additional ambulances and service as well as the men on those units to provide safety and care for our growing population, our aging population and just our overall health and wellness of our city.
My first priority on this would be the lack of revenue providing public safety. I will work to build a consensus and implement a plan that will enhance the value of our firefighters while providing additional service to our residents and seniors. This plan will bring new and innovative revenue into the city, allowing us to hire more police and fire. I'm not just talking about infrastructure, I'm talking about giving a plan. While staying committed to enhance the enrichment of the safety of our community, with the experience, experience of working together with our law enforcement and our first responders, this plan will bring more revenue and provide services to our seniors. Thank you. When you're talking about the quality of life in any city, the very first thing is public safety. I firmly believe government's most essential duty is the protection of its people. Proper investment in public safety has a positive effect on your quality of life, health, physical and economic well-being for residents and businesses across.
So as I mentioned earlier, a budget is a reflection of your values. It showcases what you prioritize. And public safety, I think we all have a consensus, is one of our top, if not our top priority and it certainly is not the safety of you, the safety of your family, of your children, of your property, the safety of our business owners here in the city of Westline. And we want to have a budget year in and year out that reflects that, that shows that we value public safety so we can work to increase staffing levels for our police and our fire department. We're potentially about to lose eight officers and upwards of six firefighters. And if we lose those, those would be devastating cuts to our public safety. Where we used to get 50, 60, 70 applicants for an opening for police or an opening for firefighters, sometimes we're getting six, eight, 10 applicants. So I want to make sure that we support our first responders with the resources that they need to keep us safe and that we don't become a revolving door for other communities.
I also want strong public safety. I have not heard any good ideas on how to produce the needed revenues. The city of Westland already commits 66% of its total revenues to police and fire. Starting eight years ago, the city cut non-police and fire personnel by more than 20%. All city employees contribute to their healthcare costs. All city employees other than police and fire no longer receive pensions or medical benefits when they retire. This includes the mayor, the clerk, all the directors and the hardworking members of local 1602. We should be discussing how we're going to come up with the money. And as the bottom line, isn't it always it, the money?
Well, definitely, I agree with everybody else, the top priority is the police and fire. We can't afford to lose anybody, we actually need to give more. One of the reasons why they're having a hard time bringing more people in is also the pensions, it's a risk. They don't want to come here and have a chance of losing a pension. We need to make sure that the pension's safe one and goes on for many years and get more people in here. As far as working with the budget, trying to get more money, like I've preached it, we've done it where I work at, there's funds for grants, there's federal grants out there, there's state grants out there. There's more than just a say program grant. And there's many, many of them out there you can be doing. It takes a little bit of effort, but it can be done. And there's other things that we can do with it, the roadworks, our winter maintenance where we can cut back on the funds there with the programs I can implement, which will give you more money to help with the police and fire.
Mr. Gober. Do you feel senior citizen funding and programs can be maintained or approved going forward? Why or why not?
Well, I would hope the senior funding can stay in place. The seniors are the base of our community, they're the building blocks of our city. One day I'll be a senior and I want the same care for myself that we give to you. So I will look forward to looking for the seniors. In fact, my plan itself, that I put together for Community Paramedics, will exactly do that. It will aid to our community and provide a good service to you and each individual residents. My plan will be online soon and it is the only plan that I see that provides new revenue streams for our city. Thank you. Can I repeat the question, please?
Yes. Do you feel senior citizen funding and programs can be maintained or improved going forward? Why or why not?
Absolutely, I see that. We made significant improvements to our Westline Friendship Center. I volunteered at the Friendship Center, I know many of the faces in the room and on their heads from the Friendship Center. I think it's an incredible resource for our community. I know the Dyer Center was mentioned, that's actually part of the public schools, but I absolutely believe in funding our senior citizens. They're backbone of our community, they brought people like me into this world and we need to protect them. They're also very vulnerable, so we have to make sure that we're protecting their best interests.
I too would like to go there, we can absolutely maintain our senior funding. We've had a lot of investments, as has been mentioned, in the Dyer Center, in the Friendship Center, in senior activities over at Jefferson Bonds, in senior activities at our new city hall. So society's only as good... So society is only as good as the way it treats those that came before it, those that sacrificed, and those that paved the way for all of us to be able to sit up here and talk to you today. You know, my mother, she wouldn't want me to say this. She is not sixty, but I won't give the specific age. And I would want to make sure that she's being taken care of in the community she lives in with adequate resources and adequate programs and activities. So as a councilperson, I want to work with our seniors, whether or not they use the Friendship Center, or the Dieter Center, or any one of our activities, and know that those resources are there for them. And that, again, a budget is a reflection of your values. We show our seniors here in the city of Westland that they matter to us by having those resources in the budget for them.
Well, I'm proud to say that I'm a senior now. And I did join the Friendship Center. And I've started going to a couple of their programs. I do the yoga Tuesday night. And it's an awesome facility. There's so much information there. I have to compliment Barbara Markham, who's the director, and Donna Jackson for all their hard work that they do. All the meals, they have Meals on Wheels, they have all kinds of things. And yes, I'm definitely in favor of keeping our funding for our seniors and keeping those resources, because it always seems like there's always someone in need or have questions. When I was out walking, there was a lady who was concerned about some things, and I was able to give her phone numbers to the Resource Center, the Friendship Center, and she was very thankful for that. So I hope things work out for you.
We most definitely need to keep the funding going for our older adults. I'm 57 years old, so I'm knocking on that door. And I hear it daily from my mother, who's 82 years old, young. But there needs to be more done. I know with the Medicare, we need more seminars and stuff. That's changing yearly, and it's really confusing. And our homebound residents, there needs to be more than just five days for Meals on Wheels. It should go up to seven days. Some of those people, they rely on this. Why are we just doing five days? Transportation, I've talked to a lot of the older adults. They say they're getting dropped off, and it's taking a long time to get picked up, sometimes hours. And I was just floored by this. So we need to make sure that everything stays up to date and be on top of this. Transportation needs to be good for the older adults, Meals on Wheels, and other programs to help.
So it's a really odd phenomenon when you get to watch your parents and in-laws transition to becoming senior citizens. And my mom would kill me if she heard me refer to her as a senior citizen. So I would be remiss if I said that I wasn't a little bit worried about the services that we do provide for our seniors. Our Westland residents are really fortunate. The Friendship Center is fantastic. We do have naked transit to help you get around the city into appointments. But I think one of the things we have to look at is addressing our ordinances that are going to allow our aging population to age in place, if that's something they so choose. A lot of families are coming together to take care of their aging parents, and I think that's wonderful. And I think we have to be able to accommodate that. But of course, I'm certainly going to look at some pretty sweeping changes of our ordinances in order to do that. And I'd also like to see us going into our neighborhoods for those that are still living at home and give them some additional tools and resources to maintain their homes.
Okay. This will be the final question before everybody has a chance for one minute. And it goes right along with what's happening in the world today. Climate change affects everyone. How can the city council support and help save our earth? For example, every time trees are cut down, it affects our future. Mr. Londo.
Well, I would have to say recycling. Before we had our issues with recycling, Westland was a proud city. A lot of people were enamored with Westland's recycling. And I'm proud to say that very soon, we'll have an announcement from the city of Westland that your curbside recycling bill will be resuming, restored. It's going to look a lot different. You're not going to be able to throw some of the material away that you once did. But I also want to mention that the recycling center is still open on Marquette Road. When I'm knocking doors on residents, they say we no longer have recycling. We absolutely still have recycling. Unfortunately, you have to take your recyclables to Marquette Road, but those materials are being recycled at the recycling facility. And like I said, very, very soon, I believe, we will have a solution to this problem that we've been facing. And I'm going to be looking forward to making that announcement.
Very thankful for this question. Climate change is an issue near and dear to my heart. And if you drink water or breathe air, it should be an issue that is near and dear to your heart, too. We have until 2032 to tackle this problem, not just in the city of Westland, but around the globe. And there's a lot that we can be doing here to lead the fight on climate change. I'm proud to be a member of Clean Water Action Michigan, the Sunrise Movement, and the Sierra Club. And what we can do is we can implement more charging stations at our city buildings for electric vehicles to encourage more people to go to North Brothers Forward and buy an electric vehicle. We can limit things like a plastic bag bag or limit plastic straws and limit single-use plastics as our neighbors to the north in Canada are doing. We can work regionally to develop a comprehensive solution for our recycling program so that we do not have to just ride down Marquette for this. So the issue of climate change is near and dear to my heart. We have until 2032 to address this and get this right. And I want to make sure that we make good on our mission green statement here in the city of Westland.
I'm for recycling, but here's the problem. We need to educate people on how to recycle. When they did have the recycling, people were throwing things in the container that would contaminate the whole load. When they went to the dump, they saw one little thing that shouldn't have been in there. That whole truck went to the landfill. So we need to educate everyone on how to properly recycle recyclables.
Well, recycle is a big, big thing. Mike mentioned that they're going to be announcing something soon. And like you said, hopefully, it's a system set up to where it's going to be fairly easy, where we can know what to put in there and not. She's correct. If we put different items in there that belong, they do, they discard the whole thing. The other things we can be doing is our salt trucks. They're putting down an ungodly amount of salt down on the roads, and it gets into our water system. There are other ways of doing this. You can calibrate these trucks so they're not putting down so much and going with liquids. We do it in front of the hills. We saved our salt over 50%. And our roads are terrific. They've won APWA winner award on this. So there's many other ways we can be doing stuff.
So when it comes to a municipality addressing an issue as large as our climate crisis, everybody wants to start recycling, and I think that's noble. And I think that's something that the everyday person feels like they can be a part of. Right? We all have our bins. We all sort, hopefully, and rinse our items. You know, there is going to be a need to address the consumer, because there are going to be some consumer-level changes, as Michael and Deb had spoken about. And I think one of the best ways to create more green initiatives in Westland would be work with our youth, because they seem to be the ones who know how to make change happen, something like the young lady today. And utilize some of the tools that are reusable and bio-friendly, eliminating waste plastics. And when we do have new developments, recommend, if we can't demand, that they are using green building materials, solar, energy, et cetera.
That's a great question, and I'll fall in line with the recycling. And soon you'll get some of my literature on the recycling programs, and I'm so glad this question was asked. I will not sit back and wait for somebody else to take care of the responsibility. I'll take action, and I've already done that. I reached out to the city of Taylor already and the city council members of Taylor. They want to work collaboratively with the city of Westland to come up with a cost-efficient way to recycle, collaborating together with two large cities. There is no reason, as two large cities, as Taylor and Westland, they can't work together to come up with a program. And I'm happy to do that, and I'm happy to bring it to the city of Westland. Thank you.
Okay. We are now ready for the closing, and we'll start with Mr. Londo. One minute.
Well, again, thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Village of Westland for hosting this incredible event tonight. Also, I want to thank all the candidates for sharing your ideas and your vision for our great city. While I've only had a short period of time to speak to you, share my ideas on how we can continue to make Westland the best place it can be. You've had a chance to see me in action for two years, serving as your city councilman. If I'm re-elected, I'll continue to be fair, respectful, and accessible to my fellow Westland residents. If there are any matters that you wish to discuss that weren't addressed tonight, please feel free to call me directly at 734-223-0200. You can also visit my website at votelando.com. I have some literature out in the hallway. Please feel free to grab some. It has all my contact information on there. And I also plan to stick around after the meeting and talk to anybody that wishes to talk to me. I'll stay as long as everybody wishes to speak to me. Thank you again, and please vote Londo on November 5th.
Well, this truly is democracy in action. And democracy cannot be any longer a spectator sport. No matter what side of the aisle you fall on, no matter what your vision is for our city, everybody needs participating. And I'm so glad that the League of Women Voters has put this on, and all of you have come here today. I live at 652 Forest Street here in Westland. I live with my very cute, overly spoiled, black-legged, birch-trimmed chihuahua who honestly really runs the house. She runs me. And like you, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm a homeowner. And the decisions that council makes, they're going to affect me, too. The decisions we make on public safety, on our parks and recreation, on our senior services, on whether or not we have a transparent and accountable government. Those decisions affect me, too, because like you, I live here. I'm a homeowner. I'm a taxpayer. And so I'm asking for your vote, and I'm working to earn your vote. You can visit mcdermottfromichigan.com and read through my comprehensive 10-point plan and give me your feedback and what you think. And you can always call me at 734-890-2146. And on November 5th, you can vote for me. Thank you.
Well, I hope you learned a little bit about myself tonight. I'm asking for your vote, if you ever care. Your absentee ballots will be coming soon. And you can go to the polls, which I like to do, on November 5th. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on a storm tonight and the Village of Westland for hosting this event. If you'd like to contact me, I'll give you my personal phone number at 734-748-3952. That's 734-748-3952. I also have an email, electdubroocare@gmail.com. Thank you.
I would like to thank the League of Women Voters also. This is a tremendous event, and I thank you all for showing up tonight. I'm not doing this for a living. I'm doing it because I live here. I'm a resident. I'm a homeowner. I pay taxes, and I want what's best. And if you vote for me, I work for you. There's so much more we can be doing in this city. And I appreciate the time that you've given me, and I'm going to stick around, talk to everybody who wants to talk to me. You can also go to my website, www.vofordell.com. I have a detailed plan on everything we've talked about today and how to solve this. You can also go to the Facebook page, M-Dell for Westland, all one word. Everything's detailed there also. Thank you.
Thank you, League of Women Voters and the Village of Westland for hosting us this evening, and thank you all for your very thoughtful questions. I think it's wonderful to see how interested you are in what each of our plans are for our wonderful city. When you vote for your city councilperson, you're asking for some very simple things from us. You're asking us to represent you. You're asking us to be your voice. You're asking us to protect your city and your children and your home and your interests. And so I would like to use my education, my experience in business, and my many, many hours and years of volunteering to take that to the next level and work for you. I promise to hear you, and I promise to advocate for you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, women of the League of Voters and Village of Green. But let me ask you a question. What better would you want to lead your city as a city councilman than a veteran, a law enforcement officer, and a successful business owner? Ask yourself here that question, and you'll come back with your answer. In conclusion, I hope to partner with our school system, state, and local government to improve upon our services and quality of life for Westland residents. There is so much more we can give with the right leadership. And as a councilman, I want you to know I will make this happen. Thank you for your time, and I humbly ask for your vote to vote for Gilbert on November 5th. I also like to thank my mother, Barbara Gilbert, my mother-in-law, Mary Sullivan, and my wife, Shandra Gilbert, for attending tonight. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. We'd like to thank the city council candidates who participated in tonight's forum. We thank the Westland City Council candidates for their willingness to serve the public and to the audience for such thoughtful questions. We thank the Village of Westland for allowing us to use their facility for the forum this evening. Our forum has been videotaped by Kevin Zwala, and it will be on the League website. And the website is on this vote card on the back, and it's also on this wonderful brochure called "They Represent You" that has a lot of information and phone numbers about everybody you vote for. So we suggest you, if nothing else, pick those up on the way out. The forum will be on the League website starting the first week in October. So Kevin gets it on the website, so anybody who didn't come tonight can watch it at home. Besides considering the candidates featured in tonight's forum, we urge voters to review the responses of the candidates in the League's nonpartisan online voter guide, which is at votefor11.org. Election Day, November 5th, and the polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Voters can choose up to four city council candidates. When you vote in person, you will be asked to show a picture ID. But if you do not have a picture ID or don't have it with you, you can still vote by signing an affidavit of identity. We urge all of you to be participants in our democracy by making educated choices in the primary election and the regular election. This concludes our forum for this evening. Thank you for coming. Be sure to vote in the November 5th Westland election.